Good morning and welcome to the Trinity County regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for April 21st. We welcome all those on the telephone. And before we get started, we would request that department heads and staff, a quick roll call so we know who's out there.
This is Shelley Nelson, HR Director.
Hi, yes, my name is James Rankin and I was hoping to get connected to the supervisors meeting.
James, this is a Board of Supervisors meeting for Trinity County on April 21st, 2020. Are you in the public?
Yes, I'm in the public.
Okay, and it's James Rankin, I'm sorry. Okay, public. Right now, we are requesting anybody from staff or department heads, roll call please.
Good morning, this is Margaret Long, County Council.
Thank you, Margaret.
This is Donna Navy, District Attorney's Office.
Good morning, this is Shannon White, Department of Public Public.
Good morning, Diane Raeder, Solidways.
Good morning, this is Sarah Trump.
Good morning, Liz Hamilton, Health and Human Services, National Public Health.
Good morning, this is Anne Presley, OES.
Okay, now for anyone on the telephone conference line for a public comment?
Yes, Diane, James Rankin.
Thank you, James. Okay, we thank you for that. We know that there's some adjustments that we're all going through with this COVID situation, so we appreciate your patience as we make our way through. And with saying that, we will call this meeting in order.
Hi, this is Sally Morris.
Oh, thank you, Sally.
Hi.
Hi. We will call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Morris has agreed. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and before we move on, we are going to report out on our last closed session, item 5.1. We gave direction to staff. Item 5.2 has been continued. Thank you. Public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on this agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Public comment.
Yeah, may I go down? My name is James Rankin.
Yes, James.
Yes, my name is James Rankin and I'm the President of the French Golds Mining District and the Legislation Chairman for the Shaft of Miners and Prospectors Association. And I came to the board meeting in August and gave a presentation on the Senate Bill 2, $75 recording fee and its effect on mining claim holders. Now, I ended that presentation with a request for a letter of support from the board for to see if we could get the bill amended to exempt the mining claim holders from what becomes a yearly $75 tax. I have a similar letter from the Shaft County Board of Supervisors and one from the Dehama County Board of Supervisors, and I would like to review the request if the Trinity County might give me a letter of support. I do have an upcoming meeting with State Senator Brian Dolly and State Legislature Megan Dolly. Unfortunately, it's been postponed due to COVID and I'm not sure of the date, but I would like to present these letters to them at that time and see if we can get any action from the legislative end to support exempting the mining claim holders from this, what becomes a yearly $75 fee. And that's it, I guess. I'd just like to thank you for your consideration and hope that you would consider a letter in support of seeing if we can get the situation amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Is there any other public comment? Having heard none, I'm going to bring it back, but I do believe that we have additional callers on the line. Would you please identify yourself?
I don't know if you're looking for me. I'm Laird Crandall. I am a realtor. I'm just listening to see what kind of actions you are taking.
Thank you, Mr. Crandall.
This is.
Welcome to our meeting. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Did we not task Mr. Coons with working on a letter or working with this gentleman on the mining claims? That was my recollection.
Yes, we did, and we've been, I thought we were bringing it forward now because we do have a letter because I spoke with the chair. Refresh me, but I thought you asked me to bring it, so we'll be bringing it back here shortly. A letter to consider the support because it's a Senate bill, so we don't have any authority as to reduce the fines or reduce the fees, but we can join, and I believe both Shafta County and Dehama County have written letters of support. So I have those in my office, so we're working on that. I can present that to the board next time. I'm sorry, when you start speaking, I thought we had on this one.
Yes, and we have been working on it, and thank you for the question. So it actually came forward during Supervisor Morris' chairmanship, and it was directed to staff. Unfortunately, there was a misunderstanding in the context. It was believed that we were being asked that we reduce our fees, and it wasn't at the state level. So Mr. Rankin was kind enough to provide the other letters of support, and we just recently realized that that was the mistake. And so, having said that, Mr. Rankin has forwarded some information to Dr. Coons and I believe Supervisor Morris also. And so, it will be coming before us, I believe, shortly. It was just a miscommunication from the beginning.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on, we have a presentation. Well, excuse me, for the presentation. We are adopting a proclamation recognizing the week of April 6th through the 12th, 2020, as the National Public Health Week, no fiscal impact. So we just, you want to recognize that?
Yeah, I talked about this with the board through this going, with the COVID and everything going on, we overlooked that our last work was actually National Public Health Awareness Week, and we just want to thank them for all their hard work, and because of working so hard, we forgot. So we're going to rectify that and say thank you for what they're doing, when they did it, and to continue because this isn't over and there's been a lot of time on the front lines taking care of all of us, so we want to just rectify that. So again, thank you.
And we do thank you, everyone out there on the front lines. So item 1.2, receive an update regarding the coronavirus, COVID-19, the Trinity County.
Point order.
Oh, you're right.
Do we meet on the proclamation?
On the proclamation, that's.
So move to adopt 1.1.
Second. And because we are on line. Supervisor Morris? Yes. Supervisor Gross?
Aye.
Supervisor Finn?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chatter? Aye, thank you. 1.2, receive an update regarding the coronavirus, COVID-19, the Trinity County and Trinity County, and I'm not sure, I only see.
We should have Liz on the line, and I think Liz, Marcy, and Ed are on the lines, and we have Suzie in the audience.
Okay.
No, we have Christine in the audience too. Okay, I'm sorry.
Marcy?
Morning, Marcy Joakim. Sorry.
Go ahead, Marcy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Marcy Joakim, Public Health, Director, thank you, to our Board of Supervisors for letting us update you. So currently, we have a total of 76 tests that have been conducted. Two are pending, 74 are negative. We continue to have no positive cases that we are aware of in Trinity County. We are working closely with CDPHs around testing, Department of Public Health around testing, and as I'm sure you're aware, the discussions have begun about what our response looks like in the future, once we pass the initial acute phase of this. The Telver Department of Public Health State Testing Task Force has begun to push out guidance on expanding access to testing and prioritization. So we're going to be looking at those strategies and how we implement them and expand testing in Trinity County. We are working closely with our region and state partners to ensure we have the testing supplies needed, as well as the PPE needed, and looking at things like what does a high-throughput testing scenario look like in Trinity County? That's a little, we're down the road, but one of the things we want to make sure of is that we incrementally increase testing based on the guidance from CDPH and in consultation with our health officer. We can provide more detailed information at our press conference on Friday. We also, we're also looking into helping our healthcare partners utilize systems that are out there. One that's recently come about is a system that will sanitize, will decon PPE and then send it back. So it'll be, those costs will be covered by the state and federal government. The healthcare systems will provide a three-digit number. They will use that number and send these to the facilities. There'll be two. One will be right now, one will be in the Bay Area, and one will be in Los Angeles. So that's a really big step toward conserving PPE and ensuring we have the personal protective equipment needed to protect our healthcare workers and our county infrastructure and our population as well. We continue to be in collaboration with, excuse me, with other counties and looking at their best practices and how they've responded, some of the lessons that they've learned, and we're applying those to Trinity County. And that's essentially, oh, one other thing, excuse me, I'm sorry. So with regarding testing, so things are starting to move a little quickly, which is a good thing around testing. We're starting to have access to more testing supplies, not the ideal of what we would need, but we're certainly increasing those numbers. The other really helpful thing is that UCSD, their lab is taking specimens from every county in California and will test those at no charge. This will require a certain amount of infrastructure in the Health Department to make that happen, but we're certainly prepared to do that. The cap for that lab is 2,500, so they can keep that time of about 48 hours, but if they hit their cap and it, and they, that time could be longer for results. But that is good news because it allows us greater capacity for testing specimens. We'll continue to work with our hospital lab, once those testing supplies become available, that they can in fact conduct testing in the hospital lab. There, I want to remind our public and the board that I would refer all of you to the FDA website. It's really important at this time to understand the FDA process around testing supplies and materials and tests and medical countermeasures to ensure that the emergency use authorization are in place. This is a process that, that certain modalities and ensures there's some protection that they won't cause harm in good. And there are many, 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 many tests and many marketing items out in the public realm that are not approved by FDA. So I would, once again, reiterate, really looking on that website. There are EUA, there's an EUA FAQ, and we'll post that on our trinitycounty.org website. And that's all for me. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, we have a question from Supervisor Brown.
I'm curious, is there any intention or desire that you've heard for drive-through testing in Trinity County?
I have, yes, we are discussing that. That is one of the, must consider the high-throughput testing capabilities. So in our plan, planning every year, we've tested our point of distribution sites utilizing flu vaccine, so our drive-through flu clinics are really our ability to test, our capacity for drive-through points of distribution. So we are looking, we're utilizing that model and that plan to look at what high-throughput might look like once we hit priority four. So priority four through the CDPH guidance is basically community-based testing of all low-risk symptomatic persons and surveillance testing of asymptomatic persons. This is going to be really, really important in moving forward and looking at this beyond this acute phase, and really what does this look like in, you know, in respect to disease outbreaks moving forward with this, because until we get a vaccine, you know, we're going to be in this for a while. The Health Department will be in this for a while. Surveillance is going to be a big piece. The other essential component of that is that in order to obtain enough data to make decisions about the virus behavior, you have to have enough people tested. You have to be able to know what has happened and what's gone on. So some of that's coming out from China, and we have some information coming out from the other places in the global setting where they've gone through this and some of their lessons learned. One of the important things that's coming out that's not broadly available at this time is serology testing. So that's going to be really important in looking at what level antibodies are protective against this. And so, there's many, many things that still must happen on the public health side with, you know, really responding to this over time. And so, when we get there, I'll be updating our board. Thank you Supervisor Brown for that question. I appreciate it. We'll be keeping you all abreast of that, as well as our public.
Okay, thank you, Marcy.
Supervisor Gross. Marcy, I don't see any more questions from the board. We appreciate these updates that you've been doing on Friday. It's really been a great tool, and I didn't get the number of how many hits were taken on last Friday, but I know it's widely done, so.
Over 500.
2,500.
Over 500.
Oh, over 500, I was going, wow. Over 500 views from last Friday, so that's, and that's what's registered on, when people share it, I don't think that, that number probably could be doubled or tripled, I'm sure. So thank you very much for that. And you're passing the baton off to?
So Ed's on the line, Ed, you have anything you want to dump in first, and then I'll go after you.
Okay, yep. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So this is the one thing that I kind of want to reiterate, and we've been very watchful of, and that's the curve. So on the 19th, the report that came out was there were 42 deaths reported in the state. On the 20th, there were 60 deaths reported in the state. So we need to be very mindful, and I know Marcy and Liz are very, very mindful of this, we need to be really careful about when we start thinking about reopening the economy here, because we're still edging upward on our death statewide. So from Hubble, there's 52 cases active, 50, there's three, and there's two recovered. In Mendocino, there's five cases. Dehama, there was one, but that person deceased, and Shafta, there are 26. There's 33,686 cases in California, and 290,500 people have been tested. As far as the EOC is concerned, we're setting up a Project Room Key protocol program here in the county. We received a little bit over $40,000 to make that happen for homeless that become positive, with COVID, and they need isolation quarantine, they have nowhere to go. The economic side, Cincinnati, Oklahoma, and our CAO are heading ahead, and they're exploring the grant, and Suzie is available today, she's going to report out on what's happening with the grant. We put sandwich boards out in the community. I personally have talked to over 100 people in the last couple of weeks, answering just different questions about the quarantine, just different business-related stuff in conjunction with our environmental health sector. We have ordered masks, N95 for county staff. They're on order right now, I don't know when they're going to come in, hopefully it'll be soon. And we are now conducting fit testing for county staff that we're being close proximity with people that could be positive. We've done six people so far. The PIO, which is Thurston, and IT, they've been updating the websites regularly with different information, but like I said there in the press conference, if anybody has any ideas or any way that we can reach people better, please let us know. That's the end of my report.
Supervisors, any questions? Did you, go ahead, Supervisor. Ed, this is Supervisor Morris. Are there two numbers for the public to reach, either you or Public Health directly? Or is it one? There was another number that was given out last meeting, I thought.
Yeah, let me have Marcy provide that.
Yes, hi, thank you Supervisor Morris. We do have two dedicated phone lines. One's the OES phone line, and the other is a dedicated phone line in public health. That is a message, phone lines in public health. We ask the public to leave a message if it's related to health concerns. We want them to reach out to their healthcare provider, and we refer them to OES for other non-public health-related calls. And we ask them to leave a message, and then we check that twice a day, and return those messages the same day, within 24 hours.
So what is that number?
Unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me, and that's one of the things I have not memorized.
Okay.
But I will make sure that you get that. And it is on our trinitycounty.org website, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
Both of those numbers.
So, Ed, this is Bob, Supervisor Chatter. Did you have a code red and the success on that?
Yes, we sent out a code red message when it was part of the county's lives. There were over 5,000 people that were actually contacted around the county directly, either by text or email. I did receive a lot of positive feedback. Usually when we send out COVID messages, there's a lot of, not hysteria, but people are asking questions, what did it really mean, that kind of thing. I didn't get anything like that at this time. It was all very positive thinking, OES sending out the message that I basically received from Public Health to be able to send out. It was their wording through our PIO, but it was all very positive feedback from everyone. So I appreciate that.
So thank you. That's a third of our population in one hit. That's really incredible. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so no further questions for you. I don't know if you're handing it off.
Hi, good morning, this is Liz Hamilton. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I think the thing that I was going to cover last was code red, so thank you for asking about that. I want to just quickly say thank you for recognizing the National Public Health Week. I'm very, very proud of our team. They're working tirelessly to put strategies and planning in place, and I couldn't be more proud, so thank you for honoring this team in that way. I have nothing additional to report at this time. So much staff is covered, thank you.
Supervisors, any questions? I do have a question. Liz, we have a question from Supervisor Morris. Thank you. It is, I know, I just wanted to see the board members and any other, even more clarification on the 14-day quarantine for second home users. There seems to be some confusion, at least when I talk to the public, there's some different ideas of how that's interpreted. So I think you and I traded some emails about that, and my understanding is if a second home user comes up, they would have to, in essence, quarantine for 14 days, but they're still allowed to go to their healthcare provider or grocery store, the same minimal activity that we're allowed to do. Is that correct?
Thank you Supervisor Morris. Yes, for any person, you know, traveling into Trinity County, especially to occupy second homes, you know, we of course would like them to become familiar with the health orders that are made available online and about what their responsibility is to self-quarantine for that 14-day period. Of course, folks are allowed to tend to essential functions, like you mentioned, such as food, medical, so limited in the way that we all are, and so really emphasis on self-accountability, self-regulation in all of these orders for the community. You know, and that's what's important as community members, is this reminder that social distancing, because we don't know. We don't know who is coming and going in and out of the county, even folks that reside here full-time, we don't know what their travel is. And so maintaining social distancing, have to be good hand hygiene, all of these recommendations are key, and they're important. So for anyone that is unfamiliar with our health orders, they can be found at trinitycounty.org, and we can encourage folks to go and read and become familiar with those.
Okay, keep the journey. Then on that.
No, I'm going to have a statement at the end.
Okay. So, thank you, Liz, and I'll let you hand it off to whoever's next. I guess it's you.
I think that's it for on the phone. I don't know if Dr. Coons has folks that are present. I don't know if Kristi Anderson from Environmental Health is present.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I just wanted to give you all an update. The last couple of weeks, we made some great progress with local businesses and communities. I've been, the last week, actually handed out guidance in person to all essential businesses, well, the majority, the vast majority. And we also worked very hard with certain other businesses this week. And I've got to say, I've never been prouder to be a Trinity County citizen and regulator. Everybody is doing a great job. We do have, you know, some people that are struggling with the orders, and, which is understandable. I wanted to answer a little more with the quarantine question. We've actually had really great success with the hotels and hotels, et cetera, they're reporting back. They give us a weekly questionnaire, and they tell us where those people came from, what kinds of essential worker they are, and they really are holding that essential personnel to their hotels. They're going vacant, vacant, losing a lot of money to follow those orders. And I never realized how many construction workers we have from New York, for instance, but it's been, it's been really great. And as far as the 14-day second home quarantine, we have had a lot of, sorry about that. It's okay. We have had a lot of complaints out of Supervisor Gross's district, so we did enlarge the health order and put on a sandwich board at the Trinity Center store, and we've been. And we've been really trying to get the outreach in that area in particular, because I think we had close to 100 complaints this last week. I think everybody's just worried about outsiders, and, you know, we tried to explain that the 14-day quarantine really is similar to the stay-at-home order. So I hope, I want to answer any questions that you guys have, and I hope that that kind of gave a summary.
Supervisor Morris. Thank you for that confirmation on the hotels. I have not received calls from the hotels, except that they are following what you've asked them or the state has asked them to do, that protocol. The 100 complaints are those from our locals who are concerned about the visitors coming in. And then my other question on the 14-day item. If someone's coming here for the weekend, that's not 14 days. So what is that protocol, if any? This is to their second home.
To the second home. And that's really a gray area, you know. Of course, we're not going to try to make somebody stay for 14 days. So that, it really does fall back to the stay-at-home order. It's really, quarantine is really similar in language as far as essential functions, essential needs. So that, I've answered that question more times than any other question.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, and people are concerned about people just coming in for the weekend. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Groves?
Yes, someplace in the doctor's orders that came down, he did say 14 days or as long as your stay.
Oh, okay.
So under our order, my understanding is you can come, stay in your house, self-quarantine for four days, and then go home and come back. We have not limited that. But I want to, I've emailed Kristi more than I have in five years being here in the past couple of weeks. And thank you for putting up with my bugging you all the time. And Kristi's been doing a good job and has been following through. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I do have one quick question, Christine. So state order, has that been extended overall from, was it early May? I've lost track on all the press conferences.
You mean the state order?
Yes.
I'm unaware if that has been extended. Maybe somebody on the phone can answer that.
Okay.
Phones have a hard time picking up the podium, so every.
So Liz and Marcy.
Hi, thank you, Supervisor Morris. At this point, the state's orders are in place until April 30th. I imagine that with their task force, on this Wednesday, he's going, Governor Newsom is going to be addressing kind of this conversation of opening the economy in a phased approach. And so I imagine that Wednesday we'll hear a little bit more on the state's guidance and direction.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for Christine?
Thank you very much. And I believe Susie.
Actually, can I jump in before? I have two things, and Susie will be the good news at the end.
Okay.
So I'm saving the best for last. But what I did want to present, I can pass this out if you don't mind everybody touching one, or I can touch everybody's, however you want to. You can put it this way, everybody can just look. This is, the doctor is rescinding his health order as the real estate.
Thank you.
Being a non-essential. When the governor first came up, he had real estate as an essential function, and our county decided to make it a little more restrictive. So he had real estate as a non-essential. We kept that in place for, it'd be 30 days now. Revisited that, and we had some input from the realtors, the local realtors, and they were really good at working with us. And they actually came up with these guidelines that they're willing to work within. So with these guidelines, the doctor said he would be willing to rescind the non-essential order and make it, and go back to the essential with restrictions. Because we kind of went back and forth, can we just add restrictions? But it's difficult to have it non-essential and restrictions. So we're going to then move it back to essential with restrictions. And what you see in most of these are, again, the social distancing, no open houses, face-to-face contact limited to none, most things done by doctor sign. When inspections are being done, it was the permission of the homeowner. So this is an action item. It's just presented to the board. If the board is okay with it, we'll bring it back. He'll go ahead and sign it, and we'll bring it back next time to ratify his signature. But if there's some changes of order like that, it's to those before he signs it.
Well, that's good to me. Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Are you good with it?
Yes. Madam Chairman, this is a press agen with OES. I just have something to add, is it okay?
Yes, sir, please.
I just got the phone numbers. So the dedicated public health line is 530-623-8235. And OES is the same, 530-623-1116, for anybody that wants to call.
Thank you. And I remind the public that it's also on the website. So to continue, thank you very much for bringing that back to us, Ed. Supervisor Groves, do you have any changes?
No. No, thanks for looking into that. It's a big opportunity for our economy as it is right now.
Yeah, I just want to, I appreciate that the board brought this in, and we work real close with the board of realtors, and they were wonderful to work with. It presented us with problems, it presented us with solutions. That was nice working with them that way. Okay, now the good news. I think it was on, on the look, I think it was around, it was in March. Was it, I think it was either the 17th, and Supervisor Morris asked us to look into if there's local funding for CBPG. So we started looking into that and started expanding. And I brought Susie in to spearhead what we're calling our task force or resilience team. And it just continued to kind of morph. And she's going to make a presentation on what's available through both the federal government, the state, and even locally, and what we're working on.
Great.
They're having a hard time on the phone here, and so if you could be cloudy.
Speak up. Good morning. Susie Coquins, your county grants coordinator. Thank you for indulging me for a few moments. I've got three different piles of news, so to speak, to share with you. First of all, as Dr. Coons announced, I'd like to share with you some of the resources and funding that the county has been afforded with regard to COVID-19 response. And bear with me, because there is quite a bit. So I would like to first start with the Human Response Network. Our local, community-based organization received so far $10,000 from the Sierra Health Foundation for Rent and Utilities. Again, these are all in response to the COVID-19 alone. They've also asked United Way for $10,000 and our local Rotary for $800 pending determination. Our Food Bank, as we well know, is serving approximately 54% more people, households, than they have in the prior month. So far to date, in the month of April, they've served 1,797 persons. Last month alone, in the month of March, they served 1,150. With that, our local foundations, the Humboldt Area Foundation, the Trinity Trust, Smolins Foundation, Trinity Lumber, and others have already contributed $36,100 in grants to our local Food Bank. That includes the purchase of a cargo container, which you guys might have seen outside the Food Bank, to store non-perishable foods. In addition to that $36,100, they will be receiving $10,000 in Community Services Block Grant funding, discretionary funding to use as they see fit, as well as a $5,000 United Way grant. So in the last month, $51,100 to the Food Bank. In addition, Health and Human Services received an increase in the Cowworks Administration allocation of $25,594. Not many upfront, they do have to claim that. Cow Fresh added an emergency allotment to eligible households, giving them the maximum allowed per household size for the months of March and April. Project Room Key, as you heard Ed Presley talk about just a few minutes ago, has donated or granted $14,164 to OES to shelter the homeless as COVID-19 response. Health and Human Services received $2,189 to use for COVID response as they see fit. And Public Health has received $311,261. County Administrative Office has received $14,164 in homeless housing assistance and prevention funding related to COVID. We will also be receiving a homeless continuum of care allotment under that same categorical funding in the amount of $12,490. As you know, if you've listened to the news, the Small Business Administration's IDLE program, which was the first to jump on board in response to the economic impacts of COVID-19, they are oversubscribed, and that program is currently on hold, waiting potential round-two funding. Paycheck Protection Program is completely overburdened. That program ran out of funding within 24 hours of its initiation. They are working on a round-two. I spoke with them on Friday. They expect a round-two, as well as potentially a round-three, just waiting for funding to step up from the federal government. Emergency Solutions Grant is typically a grant that we receive for rapid rehousing dollars for homeless persons. They're coming up with a COVID CARES Act response. They were allocated $400 billion. $100 billion they're currently working on right now, as they're calling it round-one. They're not sure if the remaining $300 billion will go out in two subsequent rounds or one subsequent round, but they're working on getting that out, and program guidelines are being developed at this moment. There's potential for National Community Action Foundation funding, a known amount at this time. We have responded to their survey on our local needs. And right down to our Community Development Block Grant, which Supervisor Morris discussed in March, and what Dr. Coons just talked about, a program that we are trying to roll out. Currently, our county does have Community Development Block Grant Program Income Dollars. It's hard to say. In our coffers, if you will, we're trying to extend those funds. And up until like 10 days ago, that was not a feasible use of program income dollars. In addition to the federal government HUD and our local California Department of Housing and Community Development, they are putting together community guidelines and program guidelines for us to use our PI, our program income that we currently have on hand, as well as some Community Development Block Grant COVID dollars. And with those two pots of money, on a state and federal level, there's $38 million available in the state of California that they're going to roll out to counties. And on top of that, we have about $700,000 of program income on hand in Trinity County. We are going to take those funds and the program guidelines when they are available. Spoke yesterday with the state. They're working on getting those guidelines out, hopefully the first part of next week. We are going to implement a program that I am calling the Economic Development Resiliency Team. Supervisor Brown is a part of that team at this moment. And we have the Superior California Economic Development Corporation. We have some local stakeholders, myself, Supervisor Brown, and Dr. Coons, all part of a committee. And we are designing a program that we hope will assist our local businesses, nonprofits, and self-employed persons with a grant or a forgivable loan. Again, we're still designing the program. Up to $5,000 to help them with cash flow, hopefully retain their space, paying rent and utilities and things like that. Again, we are working on program guidelines. I'm going to have to draft those program guidelines for what we want to do here locally, but also if we're going to use any of this Community Development Block Grant money that the federal government and state governments are allowing, we're going to have to mold those two to work together. At one point, we talked about using some of our Community Development PI money local as a match. And what I mean by that is we are going to look towards our businesses and maybe some foundations here locally to contribute money to a fund to make those grants out to the businesses. We do have a lot of entities still in business. We've got the mill, although they're not running at full capacity. We've got other businesses that are still able to work and might want to donate to an Economic Development Resiliency Fund. In addition, I know what has worked in other counties is that folks who did not necessarily need their stimulus package have donated that to help their local businesses. So we might do something along that line to spur some, not an out-of-pocket expense, but thank you, federal government, for giving us a stimulus check. We're going to help our Trinity County businesses stay alive. I'm going to look to Jeremy, Supervisor Brown, and Dr. Coons, if they have anything that I have missed. We are currently designing the program. I'm bouncing it off of all of the stakeholders, the Small Business Association that I'm working with out of Shasta County, and our local stakeholders. And it's every day, it's a lot more information. You know, it's an ebb and flow environment, so we're trying to design it where we can have the majority of our business take advantage of it and still be funded here locally at the same time.
Can you explain a little bit more in detail? I know we don't have, because we're still kicking this around, but how the private foundation will work that will be absent of it. We're going to, as a county, we're going to get started, but we're going to step back because it'll be a private foundation that will be collecting the donations.
Sure. So I know that the initiation or facilitation of this will come, you know, from the stakeholders group and myself kind of driving the process. But ultimately, we want this resiliency team to form into just our economic development team, if you will, and have it be a long-term, sustainable action and committee-driven by resources granted to it locally. With that, we have not, again, not flushed out all the details, so this is really preliminary. But we would like our local visitor center, who is a 501(c)(3), to potentially take the lead and carry this ball forward, if you will. Because they are a 501(c)(3), any donations can be tax-deductible. And they are potentially going to be accepting those donations, obviously keeping track of those donations, and then facilitating those grants or loans out after the application process has been reviewed by a loan committee, if you want, advisory committee. We have the businesses' best interests at heart, so we have parameters around keeping information confidential. It's not going to be public information, and we don't want it to be. So therefore, running it through a nonprofit makes it not part of the public records request. So if, say, a county department was operating the loan or grant forgivable loan program, and a person applied from their business for these funds, that information could be subject to public records request. And that, nobody wants their public business information tax dollars paid on the internet. So lots of reasons to run it through a nonprofit, least of which is the potential for long-term impact in a long-term program outside of COVID-19 response.
I'm excited for the opportunity. And I know District 4 businesses, the wrapping companies specifically, I think they're pretty concerned right now about how this is going to impact the summer, their season. The Rock Slide has been doing to-go food on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays at Hawkins Bar, but I don't think it's a big success by any means, and their impact is being felt. The general stores are still open, and I believe seeing similar sales as pre-COVID. But I think it's great to have a local economic opportunity for all the impacted businesses.
Great. Supervisor, please.
I have a couple of questions, but in the short term, I would just like, since the majority of businesses sit in my district, I'd kind of like if I could get a weekly update on progress. Doesn't have to be short and sweet, doesn't have to be a big deal, but just so I'm up to date on what's going on. And some businesses I know have already applied to the federal funding. I think they got in under the wire, but I don't know that they've been funded.
Yep.
So if you could just keep me updated on that. And I think it sounds, and I hope, this might be an opportunity to provide some short-term gap funding, because this federal funding, as we're seeing, is well-intended as a big machine to turn this money out to everybody. So, and then can you explain a little bit more on the
So, and then, can you explain a little bit more on the nonprofit side? I think I heard you said the visitor center is going to take the applications, or did I, I'm not sure if I heard that right.
Yeah, so the loan or advisory committee is going to accept the applications. My initial thought of how we're going to process them is that they would turn them into me, and I would potentially redact the name of the business and the address, so it's truly an anonymous entity that's applying as best we can.
Yeah.
If that's possible. And then have any monies that are contributed to the fund go through the visitor center so that they're tax deductible and maintained there, you know, held accountable. And then that loan committee would make a recommendation to the visitor center to cut a check, so to speak.
Okay. Then I just have one other question on that big list of money that you spelled out for us. I was sitting here thinking, is there any of the CDBG money or any of the other list of money that you gave to us that, we have businesses that certainly are suffering. I don't know if we have any homeowners or renters specifically, either one, who are struggling to keep their mortgage payment made or their rent payment. Is any of that money able to see fit to be used to keep them in their home versus going into foreclosure? I know HRN does some stuff with rental, I think.
Yeah. So there is going to be, and that's my next part of my presentation, but to answer your question, CDBG and CDBG PI do not do any kind of mortgage saves, if you will. Their money has to really be directed towards low, moderate-income households, and there's a whole bunch of parameters around that, and I think you and I have had conversations about that. They are currently rewriting their program regulations to include this economic development stabilization dollars. So with that, they may write in some other kind of program guidelines around, you know, mortgage and the potential, you know, to help save folks from eviction. At this point, I have not heard any of that, but I will keep you posted if I do.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Supervisor, can I, any questions?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I think my advice here would be to maybe shop around nonprofits and maybe find somebody that might be a better fit. If there's not, I have a little reservation on the plan as it is there.
Thank you. I'll touch base with you offline if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, and it's just amazing. And I think Trinity County is just so overly blessed by having you.
Thank you. And I have one more, a couple more things to share.
Okay.
You get me up here and I just, you know, endless talking. All right, in addition to the COVID funding that we will be receiving or have received, I just wanted to give you an update on my regular grant coordinating work. Grant revenue that'll be arriving in the next 30 days, some of this is actually, in the last week, already arrived. Our Emergency Solutions Grant for the admin department, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars to be used for rapid rehousing. Emergency Solutions Grant in the amount of one hundred thousand to the Human Response Network for Emergency Shelter, Rapid Rehousing, and Homelessness Prevention. We have the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Grant, all kinds of homeless issues to resolve with those funding, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. You probably heard me speak a couple months back about SB2 planning. We were just recently, with the approval of our housing helmet, granted a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for planning, and we are potentially going to be using that for general plan update and zoning code amendments, desperately needed. We will be receiving two one-two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars in Housing Navigator funding. Whole Person Care Funding, county received through Health and Human Services, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, fifty-nine dollars. That pot of money will be primarily used to staff our housing coordinator and work on homelessness prevention efforts. CMSP Local Indigent Care Program awarded us fifty thousand dollars. We have already been awarded the California Emergency Shelter and Housing Grant to the county admin department, a hundred and forty thou, excuse me, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, also for the housing coordinator and homeless prevention efforts. And then, as discussed a few minutes ago, Humboldt Area Foundation, ten thousand dollars for food bank outreach. And now I wrap it up.
Great. I don't think anybody needs to ask you what you're doing as you're in nicely shape.
Safe to say, I don't have a life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good information.
So I believe that, yeah.
I have a session, Kristi, before you go. If I may, sure.
Yes, please, I was wondering.
So, so what we're seeing on the ground in District One is not as cheery as what's being presented to us here. I would say in District One, we're leading from behind. The public is now sort of done with the strict rules and is going to a, they're being cautious, but still out there. We are seeing hundreds of people coming in. Our boat ramp on any day during the week, we have twenty to forty boats coming from out of state. By just looking at the trucks, they're not local people, they're, the majority are not local. We're seeing people camped along the lake, we're seeing RVs camped, so they're not using the forest grounds, they're just using the open woods, which can be effective in keeping the corona down, but I believe we are going to have to move, and this is kind of from Marcy, we're going to have to move faster than I think maybe people will want to move, or we're just going to be in the back of the room yelling, "Follow me," while the rest of the tourists are moving forward. So maybe Lewiston's a little different, but still, there's people out and about. You go into Trinity Center on a weekend, there's kids riding four-wheelers that are not from town, there's people drive around, there's dozens of people walking around town that are not, you know, full-time locals. So we somehow are going to have to catch up to this, and basically, at this point, all the risk is here, we're just not capturing their money. And that's something I'm very worried about, is that by June 1st, we just won't have any businesses left.
Hi, this is Marcy Castle. Hi Supervisor Grubbs, thank you so much. Yes, the Balancing Act. So the only real comment that I can make is that we, yes, economic health is as important as overall health for our county. The thing I would emphasize is that precedent has shown us over and over again that we don't want to relax these orders in a way that make it possible for the spike to happen in Trinity County, community spread in Trinity County, because it'll be much harder to contain it, and I think people would be very frustrated with having to go back to certain orders like this. So my only, my only comment would be that we do it in a way that's guided by some of the guidelines that are coming out of CDPH that are coming from the governor. Our governor laid out six indicators for reopening, so to speak. The first one has to do with expanded testing. So I can assure you, the Health Department is on that and working with partners in CDPH to bring that to fruition, but that, I would, I, for the Health Department's perspective, we are going to take our side from the governor and CDPH, and then, of course, work with our county administration and our board supervisors to do whatever we can to help that process.
I have a follow-up, Keith. I might have misunderstood your question. Was it regarding the current compliance?
Right.
Or was it regarding reopening?
It's regarding current compliance. People have already moved past where our orders are. And I'm not saying they're not being careful. The other day, I was working along Highway 3, there was probably forty, fifty cars an hour, people in kayaks and boats and moving through. So they have come up with their own plan to maybe social distance, not expose themselves, but they are not following our orders, our stricter orders. And my point is not to just open this wide, is my point is if we're going to catch up and try to get people to comply, we're going to have to be led by the public a little bit here. When I see people around, I don't see anything that seems to be dangerous. You know, if somebody's riding by you, if an eight-year-old kid's riding a four-wheeler by you, the most dangerous thing is the fact that you have an eight-year-old kid on a four-wheeler, but, but they're distancing and keeping apart and walking, but they have moved forward past our only essential order. So we somehow are going to have to, either that or people are just going to ignore us entirely. We have to move on, and I understand this is a balancing act, but I'm just trying to relay that maybe the public on an eighty-degree day is no longer paying attention to what we have to say.
Supervisor Morris has a comment.
So I'm not sure who this would go out to. I know last meeting I asked, and I'm not sure that this would solve anything by any means, but it would help, is the, are orders still on sandwich boards at Holiday? I've not seen a sandwich board there.
Should have both in, both in Weaverville and in Capeport.
I don't know if one is here yet in Weaverville, it just seems like a lot of them, you see them grocery shopping, you can tell they're visiting, or they're parking their boats in the parking lot. Is there, what is the enforcement side of all this? Is there, you know, you see other jurisdictions where people are leaving their area to go to five other, further jurisdictions to go surfing, let's say. So is there something that we should be doing from an enforcement side to keep the curb flattened?
I don't.
What, as ticketing, if anything?
I mean, our police are being shot at and chasing bad guys around. We're not going to sit at Scott Mountain and turn people around.
No, but there's parked cars, you said.
Right.
That CHP deal, I don't know.
Kristi, did you want to speak to this matter?
I did want to say that, you know, I've been working more closely with businesses rather than persons of the community, and I haven't been to Trinity Center during the weekend, so I haven't seen what Supervisor Grubbs has seen, but as far as businesses, that's really what I was speaking to earlier. And I have had to work very hard with a couple of particular businesses, with some help with allied agencies in the county, but, you know, as far as self-regulation, we're really trying to strive for that right now. Maybe the sheriff could weigh in a little bit more, but regulating individuals would be very tough, and I think what Supervisor Grubbs is getting at is that as far as, if people are going to be camping without paying the fee to camp, then we're, the businesses are losing that money as well as that, am I correct? Okay.
Would it help if on our notices that we're putting out, that we not only put just the Trinity County seal and the Dr. Seal, but we put our sheriff's seal on it too, so it looks like it's, I mean, I know we're not going to ask the sheriff to go out and enforce civil obedience, but to make it seem a little more, a little more threatening to be compliant, because that's all we can really do is continue to inform our community that we need to follow the science. What we're doing here is following the science. Just because we're at zero doesn't mean that we're not a threat. So, I mean, we could up our messaging, and hopefully that has some, has some effect.
I'd like to ask Sheriff Saxon, if you're on the phone, could you speak up, please?
Sure, I'd love to. You know, compliance is obviously something that, we know the situation now where across this nation, in fact, across the world, people are obviously getting at a point where they're tired of staying at home. We have protests going on at the state Capitol, we have protests going on at every Capitol around the city. By continuing to think about going towards enforcement, I think what you're going to do is continue to get people to fight continued compliance. I can tell you throughout my law enforcement career, the more you push, the more people will be pushing back. I understand Supervisor Grubbs, fishing, especially up in the northern part of the county where most of our vacation homes are, at the same point in time, the more we become strict with regard to people coming into Trinity County. I have to point out the fact that we have so many people that eat or go, when you're looking at the Down River area, they go into Humboldt County for shopping or to go to the coast to recreate. We have people in Reston County to go down into Shasta County to go shopping or to recreate out of that area. I just, to become more strict on enforcing people coming here, well, if they're doing something that obviously is a danger to our population, I definitely would want to take a firmer stance on that, but if people are coming here, they're social distancing and they're continuing to protect not only themselves but our population, I think education-wise, yeah, to be able to inform them that if you're going to come here, you need to continue to be safe, that would be my message, and that would be one that I think we need to promote, similar to the recent issue with regard to the Fish and Game Commission when they were talking about restricting fishing. I think my point of view on that was, I think they made the right choices to leave it up to each individual county to decide whether or not to restrict fishing. That's something that, the blanket prohibition should have been made, so I think they did a good thing there. But, I mean, that's my viewpoint in that. As was pointed out, law enforcement doesn't have the resources, especially in Trinity County, to be going out and citing people. So no doubt, if something big were to come up, yeah, we would get the call, we would go out, we would educate and tell people that they need to comply with our orders as much as possible, but every law enforcement agency within California right now is facing this, it's nearly impossible to go out and catch people and stop them and check them and say, "You're X number of miles away from your home, you need to go back home."
So I.
Maybe we shouldn't have any restrictions.
Well, we can set it up like we've done our cannabis, involuntary compliance.
Well, that's what we have. What I'm seeing is the people that are coming believe they're doing the right thing. They're not giving willy-nilly, they are driving from Oregon, they get out of their boat, they get on the lake, they're with their friend, they're not congregating. The people that are going for walking say, "I'm walking down the road, but I'm a hundred feet from anybody else." So they believe they're doing the right thing, but the problem is, is our rules are stricter than they, that they have moved past our rules. And so we, you know, we have Ace Hardware open here, and not to pick on Ace, but it's a zoo. And whatever we're doing there, we need to start expanding that and get the rules. People are not, I'm not making this very clear, people are going to Ace and they're not just buying a piece of pipe to fix their broken pipe, they're wandering around buying whatever they want to do. to do, their painting their house, their planting thing. So they're, but we're doing that in a safe environment somehow. People, I talked to a bank in Scott Valley, and they have more people now than before because people are bored. They said they have, one guy comes in every day to get $20 withdrawn, just because he wants to talk to somebody. But they're doing that safely. So the public feels that they're doing it safely. We just haven't caught up to them yet. And I think for the most part, they are doing it safely. And I'm just, I'm not asking for anything to be done. I'm just saying that on the ground, if we, and I totally agree with the sheriff, if we're trying to enforce our way out of this, we're lost.
The other item is, as if these people start becoming ill, how are we going to handle them?
Right.
Send them back to Oregon. I don't.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, whoever was that, the last comment, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That was Mr. Supervisor Finley asking if they get ill, what do we do?
Oh, we're stuck with the same problem. We're trying to not get to that situation right. And that's what you want. You don't want to be in that situation.
Right.
Are people getting sick?
That's correct. And I've had the conversation before, we have people in Trinity County that go to Shasta County to work, and they're spending eight to 10 hours, 12 hours a day down there and coming back home. So we're faced with that situation as well.
So, but Christie's very right. For now, the businesses are being very compliant. I talked to a, not a Ben Breakfast, but a RVP veto or whatever, and he's already lost $2,000 worth of business. And he's being compliant, but he really basically told me May 1st, he's done with it, you know. So if it's one or two, we can send people out and stop that. But if this is, if the floodgates open, I don't know what we do.
I think, as Liz or Marcy pointed out, we'll learn more Wednesday as they look at this phase approach perhaps as well.
Yeah. I know Richard and I, and there's a group of people working on how do we, how do we move forward right now. And we're all kind of waiting on the state as well. I don't know if Richard can speak more to that, but we do hear your concern, and we have had the same debates and trying to figure out what to do in these situations. So it's not, it's not something we have, I heard, but it's something we've been trying to figure out how to implement as well.
This is Tim Saxon. Again, I don't know if it was Dr. Coons or who mentioned it, but if you'd like to rework the public health order and include the sheriff's logo on there as well as public health and the county's seal on there, then perhaps that would be a good idea and then post that up in the general store in the northern part of the county and the different supermarkets, maybe in the post office. Maybe make a better campaign of that to post it around so that people can see it as they come into the county. You get the gas stations, so on and so forth.
And then my last observation is the small business SBA thing is so far is a joke. And I don't understand why it wouldn't be. I mean, it's a massive program trying to catch up, but the money will arrive after this is over with, I'm afraid. You know, I personally put in, two weeks ago, and haven't heard a thing back, you know, when they say they'll contact you in three days. So for businesses, that's, you know, some may get it, some may not, but it's not something to count on.
So.
Probably that's why we instituted our, yeah, that's why we instituted our program, so we can use local funds, so we're not waiting on the federal government to get back to us in three to six months. So we can respond much quicker.
Thank you, Sheriff, for that encouraging word of putting the seal on the proclamation. I think that we are in agreement for this. So Dr. Coons, it's like you have consensus to go forward with that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So I believe that concludes our coronavirus update. So is there a prepared to move into consent? Yes. So, moving on to consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. A member of the board, staff or public may request an item to be pooled and considered separately. Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Morris? 2.3. Supervisor Finley?
Nope.
Supervisor Groves?
Yeah, I was 2.3 also.
Okay. And any of our staff on the line that would like to pool an item? Hearing none, I'll move on to the public. Is there anybody on the line from the public that wants to pool? Having heard none, I'm moving it back to the board.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Moving to the clerk, recorder, assessor, item 2.3. Adopt a resolution which requests the governor adopt an executive order allowing an all-male ballot election for the November 3rd, 2020 presidential election. The cost of conducting an all-male ballot election is not expected to result in a net increase in the cost of the election if an executive order is issued. Supervisor Morris?
I just have a couple questions. On the surface, it seems pretty straightforward that I dug into this a little bit more. And of course, as the backup explains, 77%, if I read this correctly, are vote-in ballot voters anyway. Is that correct, Shanna?
Mail-in.
Mail-in, I mean?
Yeah. Judy, actually, we have 70% of our vote-by-mail, of our registered voters are vote-by-mail.
Okay, I thought it was 77%. Yep.
Well, the 77% comes from, that's how the turnout from the March election, if we look at the total votes passed versus how many were vote-by-mail, 77% of those total votes passed were our vote-by-mail people. So what I was trying to point out is that more people are voting by mail.
For sure, I got that, yeah.
Even though, yeah. So that's what I was pointing out, was that 77%.
That you're almost there anyway. So my question is, I thought election code allowed you to do this anyway, any elected office, elections office, and versus having the governor proclaim this. And is it just for this November election that you're asking of this?
Yes, that is correct. What all county elections officials in the state of California are asking for this November election to be an all-male ballot, not all of the future elections, is for this upcoming one, because we don't know what this pandemic is going to break up in November. And right now is when we need to be planning for elections. We can't wait until November or October, even September, to see what's going to be going on in order for us to start planning for that November election. Planning is now. And we all feel that, you know, we need to be proactive, not reactive, because when you're reactive, then things don't usually flow as smoothly. And we can't fail when it comes to elections.
And so you can do this without the governor's signature as an elected official, correct?
No, that is not correct. There's code in there that outlines how a vote-by-mail ballot election can be run, but it is not just a blanket code for elections officials to use.
Okay, that was my confusion. I thought you did have that authority, any office, to do this. So that was, there's where my confusion was. That's it for now, for me.
Supervisor Margaret, that, the election official white is correct. You'd have to petition the governor to get this. In some counties, you only vote by mail, but they are, they have some specific qualifications to allow that, and we wouldn't qualify.
Okay.
Supervisor Groves?
Yeah, a couple. That last one brought up a thought. Since a decent part of our county is forced to vote by mail, how do you do that without petitioning the governor?
I'm sorry, because a portion of our county, there's code, Keith, that says if this precinct has left its 250 registered voters in it, then they, the county can require them to be a mail-ballot precinct.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, that does. That was just kind of curiosity. Now, if we pass this, does this mean you're going to, or this just gives you the option to?
No, what this is, is this is asking the governor to pass it so that California counties have that option.
But I'm asking you specifically, if this goes through, will you do by mail or will you wait until you see what the coronavirus issue is?
Well, the problem, Keith, with waiting is that we are in the planning stages now, and I cannot wait. You know, I'll start setting up the election probably like early June in my system. So, I mean, I kind of need an answer before then to start preparing and setting up this election and, you know, requesting ballots for my printers and stuff. But that's the, that's the urgency of this, is that, you know, we need to be proactive and make sure that we can actually run an election that's successful state and acceptable for all voters.
So the answer is, is that yes, if you will go ahead and make it an all-ballot, or all-male?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct. That is correct. And, you know, there's, in the code, or I'm sorry, in the executive order, there's leaving, there's another executive order that the association has put out. There's a little more in detail than this plainly simple one. This executive order and resolution similar to this was passed by Contra Costa and Monona just last week. Current county is going this week, and I believe there's many other counties that are going to their boards. And it's leaving the option to have in-person voting also, you know, because there's going to be times where you're going to have to be face-to-face with the voter, because not everything will be handled through the mail.
Let me follow up. So, but it is still true, if we have regular voting, anybody that's worried about going to a polling place can still mail in their ballot, the other 23%, correct?
So if an all-male ballot election, if an executive order was passed, then I would be mailing it out to every voter in Trinity County?
No, my question.
Would I have a poll, would I have a, I think I know your question, would I have a poll site set up for people to come in and get a regular ballot and vote as they traditionally voted in the March election? No, I would not. I would have a site open that if a voter lost their ballot or needed clarification on something or needed additional information, that's what we would be open for. The same-day registration stuff for conditional voters, those are the types of things we would have in-site voting open for.
No, I'm sorry, I must have misspoke. The question is, is if we don't change anything, that voters who have worries about the Corona can still, or COVID, can still mail in, you know, apply to be a mail-in ballot?
That is correct, Keith. But the other problem is, if we don't change something, is having poll workers to actually work poll sites. I've already had poll workers that were, that were a little weary of working the March election. It's very difficult to find poll workers, and typically our poll workers are the retired folks that are more susceptible to viruses. So it's going to be real difficult if I'm required to have polling places to actually find poll workers to staff those polling places.
All right. Thank you, Shanna.
Supervisor Finley?
Yeah, Shanna, at this point, could anybody fill out the form and request a mail-in ballot and become permanent mail-in anywhere in the county? And could 99% of the county do that if they wanted to?
That is correct, John. Any voter, registered voter can request a vote-by-mail ballot.
Good point.
So I just have a follow-up to something you said, Shanna. In my reading, when counties have moved this way to a mail, all-male vote by mail, not all mail.
I take that. Just a joke.
So you, they've had typically what is known as a voting center. Maybe it's just one, maybe at your, at the courthouse, like for four days prior to the election day, just for these kind of oddball things that come up. Or if someone really feels, because it's this part of our democracy to go in and personally vote, is that going to be available at all? Or did I hear you saying no? It's not really a poll center.
I think what you're referring to is the voter's choice act. It was passed a couple years ago that some counties have entered into where they're required to have some vote centers open per voter registration total. And in order to have those open, you need to have, for one, I would need to have connections to the county's infrastructure. So therefore, we'd have to have Wi-Fi or network connections into the current EMS, which is the Elections Management System. And I would have to have poll workers who are knowledgeable enough in election codes and the election system in order to be able to issue a ballot to those people. And with this going on, I don't think that I have those options.
Gotcha. And I was just only thinking as having it at the courthouse, you know. And you're right, it was the voter choice act that I was reading that passed a few years ago. So, all right, that answered my question. Thank you.
Supervisor Brown?
You're welcome.
No, no questions.
So I have been reached out to by phone and emails since this agenda item went public. And there's concerns, and I'd say it's pretty emotional. People feel it's their constitutional right to be able to go to a center. And as both Supervisor Groves and Supervisor Finley has, you know, pointed out articulately, that anyone who is really concerned still can get an absentee ballot. November's a long way off. We're just discussing trying to open up the county next month. And the bigger concern I think I have is that the federal government, the president himself, has come out very strongly against the mail-in ballots. And my concern is if we go forward as a state, that this will end up in court. And that would perhaps put our elections in November hanging. And Supervisor Finley, you may head up on the board a little longer if that happens. So it could nullify, not just Trinity County, but California, why it is in the court process, and that just looks like a messy adventure. I think that if the governor is going to do the executive order, that's fine. I have concerns. When I read the resolution, it appears as though it's coming from, unless you're really paying attention to the fact that this is, we're requesting the governor to do this. And I think the governor has really done a great job during this COVID situation. I think he's been out in front of most of the other states. And I'm just going to say that me, myself, for one, I'm going to trust his communication with the president on what they feel is best for the state of California. So with that, I would entertain a, is there anybody from the public that is really?
Can I add to that, what Bobby has just said? You know, Bobby, we are requesting the governor, Doug signs an executive order, but the governor can sign any order he would like. What we're just letting him know is what we, as elections officials, would like to see happen, because we, as elections officials, are the ones who are hitting the ground running. We're the ones who are running these elections. The governor isn't. So it's basically just giving him information and input for him to make a decision on the November election.
I think we all, as elected officials, still have that capacity to let him know our personal feelings. So is there anyone from the public that would like to weigh in on this matter, besides those that have already contacted us? Having heard none, I bring it back to the board.
Yeah, this is John from Archon Justice City.
Oh, sorry, John. I'll reopen it up. I know sometimes that mute button gets in the way.
I feel like it's really important to try to keep the polls open. There's lots of last-minute voters. There's lots of last-minute voters in the last election, and it seems like it could be done in a safe way, using social distancing and masking up and whatever new state procedures might be available in November. I think it's really important to keep, try to keep these polling places open. That's all from me.
So, any other public comment before I bring it back to the board? Having heard none this time, we will bring it back to the board.
Motion to move to 23.
Second.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Hi.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
Supervisor Toward?
No.
So, moving on to reports and announcements. Report from department heads, all those online, anyone online wishing to report out?
Yes, this is Donna Bailey, and I probably should have joined into the COVID comments, but I wanted to update the board on the judicial or the criminal side of the COVID-19 and the changes that have been made. The Justice of the Supreme Court granted an order for Trinity County to suspend and count all dates between March 23rd of 2020 to April 17th of 2020 as holiday. So, those days are now considered to be not counted in any kind of proceeding. There's also been an additional order now from the Chief Justice that the effect, she's done several things. One is a bail emergency order, which remains in effect for 90 days after the declaration that the emergency is over. And the emergency bail order basically provides that every person who's in pre-trial custody on certain offenses gets a, what's known as a zero bail, not a no bail, but a zero bail. In other words, they don't have to post any bail except for certain offenses. So, I've worked with the jail as to who would be eligible as to those. That does not prevent officers from applying to, expedite to a judge for a bail setting or an increase in bail for certain offenses that they consider will be, continue to be committed, or that makes a defendant particularly a threat to public safety. In addition, she's ordered the use of technology for remote court appearances. And I'm happy to say our court did a dry run yesterday, and they've instituted remote court appearances today for the District Attorney's Office and for law enforcement if the defendant agrees. It seems to be working well. I haven't heard any complaints so far this morning. I think that a lot more people will be using it so that they don't have to come in the courthouse or into the courtroom, because our courtrooms are not big enough to give six-foot social distancing. In addition, the Chief Justice has extended the time for certain court hearings to be conducted. Our court does not expect to have jury trial until August. Jury trials can be extended for 60 days beyond what would have been the final date, plus another 30. So, we will not probably be calling jurors in until the August jury trial date. There's also been an order for early release of inmates, prison inmates, who had 30 to 60 days left on their sentence. Those have already gone into effect. I have worked with the Sheriff and Environmental Health regarding businesses that are not obeying the Governor's order. Those businesses can be prosecuted either under the Business and Professions Code of 17200 for basically an unfair business practice if they remain in business in violation of the Governor's order, or they can be prosecuted under the Misdemeanor Statute. But the Sheriff and Environmental Health and I have designed a notice of violation that will be given first to the business owner. The business owner will be asked to sign it, and they'll be given a copy of the Governor's order. If they don't abide by that notice of violation, they can then be cited within whatever time the Environmental Health Director provides them to comply. In terms of, your conversation kind of got circular regarding people coming to visit in regard to businesses remaining open. And I don't know if, what you were asking is, will those people be prosecuted that are coming from out of county, or will the businesses that are catering to them be prosecuted? So, do you want to clarify that, Supervisor Groves?
I was actually not asking for any prosecution. What I was trying to point out to staff is that what is happening on the ground, and so we can make a plan to move forward. So, I wasn't really asking for anything in general. It was more of an informational issue of-
And I will tell you, I observed that this weekend also vans of people together, and they seem to be coming from out of county. So, of course, if they're all in a van, they weren't abiding by the six-foot distance regulation. I think quite often those people can simply just be warned and advised of what the rules are. The other thing, the other issue that I've been asked about is price gouging. And price gouging for any business remains in effect for 30 days after the declaration of an emergency. And after that declaration has ceased, the local board can extend however long it wants the price gouging to stay in effect past the declaration of the emergency. And it's basically overpricing it more than 10% above the price charged immediately prior to the declaration. So, we have posted on the District Attorney website a press release in that regard, in addition to a press release regarding potential scams that occur during the course of a pandemic like this, in terms of people claiming that they have a cure, or people calling from far away saying needing money, which happens quite often in all kinds of contexts versus just a pandemic. I'm open to any questions. I did just want to bring you up to speed as to why we may now be having a more transient population in addition to what some of your constituents may be asking you as to why trials and why the courthouse doesn't seem to be as busy as it is. Any questions?
No, thank you for the update.
Well, actually, I do have a question. Supervisor Chadwick here, Ms. Bailey. I was on your web page not that long ago, and it had quite a bit of information, but I think you spoke today of some information I didn't see. Is, am I incorrect in that, or are we totally, it seemed like you gave us information today that was new to me. So, I'm just curious if that has been posted.
I haven't posted anything about the judicial, the Chief Justice's orders.
Okay. And that is new information for the public who are not here and probably watching this. Will that be posted on the website?
If you would like me to, I can. It's been fairly public, it's just because it's the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of California, and it's posted all over their website. What I may do is just a brief summary and then refer people to that.
Yes, that link would be great. I think that would be awesome.
She was to say, when there's a lot of lawyers involved, the finding points get constantly debated, and she's being constantly asked, what did you mean when you made this order?
I think that would be a great help for the public, just to have that link with a brief explanation. That'd be great. Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
I will do that.
And I think you were right on time with that being on the department head, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other department heads?
Yes, this is Joe Morio. I just want to make, if the board was not already aware, Calcanis suspended their inspections for COVID, because of COVID-19. We were actually planning on doing inspections, and we managed to squeak two in before we got the word that, oh, that means you too. We actually thought, since we're isolated, we'd call ahead, see if someone's sick, we could keep working. But they have pulled the plug on us until further notice. So, I want to make the board aware of that.
Thank you, Joe. I didn't know that. I wasn't aware. Are there any questions? Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
I'm Les Rick.
Welcome, Rick.
Morning. Rick Tiffett, Director of Communication. Just wanted to give you a brief update of roadwork that we are going to be initiating now that the weather's getting good, and we're hoping to have finished before the end of fiscal year on June 30th. We're looking at chip filling the first two miles of Peak Road. Post-mile on Trinity Mountain Lake, from post-mile four to the store at Peak Road. There are also four pulver processes that will be fixed on Trinity Mountain Lake that are in preparation for road reconstruction from post-mile zero at losing the road to post-mile four. We are also, this is material, depending if we can get the materials early enough, chip filling the first five miles of Big Creek Road. We have received the signal polls for last golf, so we'll be doing some of the preliminary work. But we're looking to kind of wrap that up after the summer, rather than in the middle of the summer. Then we should be in the next couple of weeks finishing up the signage and striping projects for the aid program. You probably noticed a lot of new signage out there around the curves to improve safety. We're hoping to have that wrapped up. One of the things that SB1 also allows us to do is to get 1,000 tons of asphalt to each one of the yards. And so, this will be one of the first years where they actually will have that 1,000 tons and hide it all summer and be doing a lot of patching. I received notice last night that we received $52,000 for the four airports that are in the federal aid system. $1,000 for Ruth and for Weaverville, $20,000 for Hayfork, and $30,000 for Trinity Center, and allowed to be used for operational costs. And so, we can use that to offset the state's rent that we get, essentially allowing us to stretch those a lot further. So, that was good news. But we are, I am right now actively working with them to try to get some cares funds out of the airport improvement program to pave the runways at Hayfork and Ruth. We have plans ready to build for those, just been working on funding, and this might be an opportunity that we're trying to grab right now. Out of the jail, jail's going along great. By the end of the fiscal year, I expect to have the roof on it and the structure work essentially complete. I'll try to get us a tour out there over the next a couple of weeks, so you guys can go out and see what the shell looks like. It's pretty much getting close to being complete. I'm hoping they have a lot of scaffolding out so you can go around it very well. Concerning the jail, there's two other things that are going to be baked this summer. I hope to have the waterline construction out to bed by the end of the fiscal year and actually bid back on the issued contract. We did look at the alignment and think we have a cheaper alignment than the one that was originally established, so maybe we'll have the savings there and bring that in on the budget. And then finally, we have Tom Bell, even though of the Calcanis project, it's important for the jail to be elected for me from Highway 3 into Tom Bell to go up to the jail, and that starts here in the next couple of weeks, and will be taking place over the summer so it's completed before the jail opens up. And then finally, a big thing that's probably going on in the office is we're starting to work on permitting annual communications for the fiber line along 299. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
Supervisor Finley?
Rick, this is John. On the airports, on the airport money, is there any matching?
No, actually, that could be used for matches. It's surprisingly fairly unrestricted.
Okay.
Just needs to be said that the airport in which it's allocated to.
Great, good, thank you.
Supervisor Morris?
Say again what you were working on, on the fiber line?
We're working on the permitting, and there's, and we're also, there's some nodes that have to happen, and there's some work of straightening out property lines and providing space for them to rent or purchase a node station on county property. And we're working on that right now. We'll be talking more about that in depth as we have a better picture developed as to what we're doing.
All right, thank you, Rick.
Supervisor Finn?
No, no questions.
Rick, it's Bobby. Where will the asphalt be? How many locations?
We have 1,000 tons of asphalt going to each one of the yards, Hayfork, Ruth, and Weaverville, and they can use it anywhere within that district. So, essentially, those crews that have worked, a lot of it will be going towards preparation of the SB1 projects where we're chip filling. They'll go in and fill the potholes. And then I wanted to make sure that they had enough mix to go in and do some significant pothole repairs in different areas outside of where we have designated for chip fills, but at least be ahead of where we're going to be chip filling in the future years and what's, and then getting out and fixing some of the areas that aren't going to be touched for a while, but taking care of the whole gap.
Is there a requirement on how, on a date that you have to use that by?
No, it's unrestricted, but we have to report on our progress every year, so we like to show forward progress. And now that I've had a lot more time for DOT, we're trying to, in a sense, get caught up, if that works, to show that we're making progress. And this year, depending on where the feds end up with our ER and LAPD project, whether we, I'm not sure they'll be able to get it done this year, but they might be working on it next year. But we're hoping, we're pushing them for this year. There's this amount of construction that goes along with that, that we also are joining in with for disaster recovery. And so, there should be a lot of activity around that, but that will take place after the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay, I believe so, Supervisor Morris.
So, Rick, when you first said all yards, I assumed that you meant Trinity Center, but Trinity Center is not getting?
No, Trinity Center is not, when I mention all yards, I mean the primary yards that we have access right now.
Okay.
Weaverville, Ruth, Claypool.
Well, that's disappointing. But with that, the Trinity Center yard, there is big 20-yard trucks in there today moving stuff out. What's going on in the Trinity Center yard? Is that getting ready for the bridge to start?
Yes. Yes, the bridge is actually going to, significant instructions will be taken place this summer, and they will be very soon removing the structures, the old structures that are there next to the highway. And that's the one that we were reimbursed for, and we're going to wait until a lot of- And that's the one that we were reimbursed for, and we're going to wait until a lot of the construction is over and then reconstruct the new sheds. It probably will not be prior to this winter, but before next winter, I would see it in that kind of timeline. But we will, we will be replacing the facilities with new facilities that consist of two covered parking spaces and then a small office where people can go in, answer a phone. We're actually going to build a cabin type facility in it with the shower, so that if someone goes up there and spends the night, they'll be ready to go the next morning. We'll allow them to be able to do that in the house with us.
Okay, I'll hold you to it.
Do we have a follow-up with Supervisor Morris?
Hey, Rick, it was a little tough to hear. Can you repeat the Lance Gulch stoplight situation, if I heard that correctly?
Um, we have the signal equipment in, or not the equipment, but the poles.
They are being put in now? No.
But that's
I still didn't quite hear you.
We have the signal poles in the courtyard right now.
Okay, got it.
That, that are, or either it's in the, I'm sorry, it might be at the contractor's yard, but we haven't. And our, the idea is to do a lot of the prep work before the summer travel season, and then actually stand the poles shortly after summer's over and get it operating.
Okay, that's, I thought you said my line to be sure.
And that's summer 2020?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I don't see any other questions or follow-ups, so we appreciate all your work. And any other department heads?
Good morning, Tim Sachs, and how are you today?
Good, Jim, welcome.
Hi, just like to report in staffing-wise, we've filled the last two vacancies we had for correctional deputies, so we're staffed on our current allocations, getting those trained. You remember that I reported that we had three deputies that we put into the academy in January? They were doing very well until the COVID crisis hit, and then they shut down the academy. They've been working back here. We just got word that hopefully they'll be going back to the academy in the middle of May, so we've got our fingers crossed on there that they'll put their graduation back instead of the middle of June, we'll put it sometime in the end of July, so we're hopeful for that. And if we can get them graduated, we'll put, they'll put our staffing of our sworn members back up to 19, which will be outstanding, so we're doing well on that front. Jail operations are doing well so far, knock on wood. Our inmate population is healthy. We, in conjunction, you've heard our District Attorney mention the fact that we were able to get a couple of people released, so our jail population is hovering between 47 to 50, which is still kind of high, but it's manageable. So we're really excited. As you heard Rick Tiffett point out, the jail's moving on very well. We've got Pete Baraga and Under Sheriff Ward, they've been working very hard on internal processes with regard to the new jail, moving forward on that. We're excited that we'll be looking, hopefully, the first part of next year to be able to start operations on training and getting into that. We're moving forward on our new dispatch system. Over there, we've been very, very encouraged, reaching out for a new type of system that will be considerably less expensive than the original price we got on the first system. So we're still looking forward on that, so that was a lot of good news when we heard some revised pricing on that. Other than that, operations are going forward as normal. Do you have any questions?
Pardon? I just, I have a quick question. How's it going with doing the food outreach kitchen staff? Is that working out good for you?
It's working very well. I talked to the kitchen staff last week, they said it's not been any problem. The commodities are coming in from the food bank very well, they come in. We're maintaining social distancing, if you will. The food comes into the front part of the kitchen, they do not come inside, our staff moves it in, prepares all the food, processes it, and then moves it back out into the entryway, and then food bank personnel come and pick it up, and then they make the deliveries.
That's excellent. And do our cadets get extra credit for working while they're waiting to go back to school?
We have them employed, and they're going on ride-alongs with deputies now and actually counting in some of their training that they would get after graduation. We're putting them through some of that training now, which we're hoping will cut down on some of their training time after they get out, their field training time.
Supervisor Morris has a request.
Hi, Tim, just a quick clarification, and I think you were just referring to the meals you're making for the Golden Age Center. Do I have that correct?
Well, we were approached by Jeffrey England on behalf of the food bank.
Um, or
I don't, we were not approached by the Golden Age Center.
Okay, well, he sits on the Golden Age Center board, so that's why I confused the two.
My understanding, it was Jeffrey England. I don't know anything about the Golden Age Center in particular.
Okay, last meeting, I thought you said you were, and I could have misunderstood you because of the phone issues. I thought you were making meals for choirs, so do I have that right, John?
Yes, you do, but at this point, I don't believe that PSA II will be participating in this
Okay.
outreach in any way, shape, or form. The funding has been withdrawn from, from Golden Age Center simply because there's been no response. And a decision was made yesterday
Oh, okay, so that's news to me then.
With executive board approval to, to do nothing because they've received nothing from them.
Okay.
And the outreach has been tremendous, as you know, from PSA II
Yes.
to Golden Age to attempt
Yeah.
to move forward.
Okay, so that may be a non-starter of a point that I'm making, so
Sorry, Judy.
We'll get back to you. I think if you can follow
Well, again, my understanding was that Jeffrey England had provided all the food and the menus, but, and if they provided the menus, then at that point in time, all the dietary issues, I believe, would have been covered, but
Oh, okay, yeah.
Again, we were not making up the menus. My understanding was they were providing the food and the menus, but
Okay.
I can follow up.
Well, that's half of it anyway, so that you might have already been covered, so forget what I'm saying.
I'll talk you that.
I think that wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Are there any other department heads? Dr. Kuhn's moving on to County Administration.
Two, two quick point of orders. The archives minutes are now on our Board of Supervisors, Board of Supervisor website, so people can look those up now.
Thank you.
And I just got a note that the CDFAs and the BCC are sending guidelines to our local growers, and I've met with a few of them, and they said they're doing everything they can to institute these guidelines to help prevent the spread of COVID. They're issuing masks and gloves and limiting as much as they can about county travel and interaction with people from out of the county. So they're taking it serious and ensuring the county that they're working and following the guidelines that are being sent out to them by the state.
That was timely.
Yes.
Any questions?
No, of course it doesn't. That only applies to our license holders, I am assuming?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, can add to that, I have a licensed distributor come up, and they wore all their protective gear, they had a procedure implemented for looking at product and counting money, and it was all followed.
Great. It's the other, it's the rogue folks that we're not sure what's going on.
Well, we're pretty sure.
Yeah, I'll take that back, you're right.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to reports from members of the board. Supervisor Brown?
Um, I know auto county travel, did have a TMC phone call on the ninth and the Economic Development initial phone call on the sixteenth. I think Suzie did a good job on reporting on the economic development side. I'll leave keys to share from TMC. Otherwise, I've been just trying to send out a newsletter when I feel that there's new pertinent information to get out to my 44 subscribers, hoping for that number to get up there eventually into the hundreds, but the email thing is challenging, and finding the right subject line so that it doesn't immediately get deleted is a key method I need to practice. Otherwise, only, I think, two phone calls in the last three weeks, so I feel that District Four is doing well.
Great.
All things considered.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Finley?
I just, oh, report out, obviously, this canvas in your header works really well.
Oh.
Sorry, but no auto county travel, but I do have a problem in Southern Trinity, I believe CAO is aware of it, that I would like the board to think about and give some direction on, and that is that there are possible intrusions into tribal archaeological sites in Headen, and Kim brought it to our attention, there might be a little of a shenanigans going on, but it looks like there, we might be seeking an urgency ordinance for an exclusion area within the Headen Valley.
So then, I have that will come forward?
I don't know, it depends on whether you have any interest in it or not.
To deal with more information?
Yeah, and Director is working on it, Kim is working on it.
And I, I'm, may I ask if it's appropriate time to ask this question? It might not be. Has the tribal leaders been notified, or are they aware of this?
They're, they're, I don't know if, it's not, you're aware of the tribe
Okay.
down there and their situation. Many members of, many of my constituents are associated with tribal, the tribe and members. They are concerned, and how far they take to them, I don't know. How far it comes to us and what our liability will be eventually, I don't know. It just looks like there's going to need to be something done about that.
John, is this on private land?
Yes.
And the person that owns the property is not?
You know. There is some, there is a little bit of public land involved.
Okay, and is this a new thing, or is this something that's been going on?
It's new. It's newish.
It's because people are bored with COVID or something?
I don't know.
So are they finding artifacts and keep digging? I mean, I'm missing that, what's
I am too. It was just brought up, Kim is aware of it, Kim is moving forward with it, and you're probably going to see something in the future regarding it, but I want you all to be aware of it, and Richard is aware of it.
Okay.
We met yesterday with both co-compliance, co-enforcement, and planning, and discussed it, and it is a significant cultural, I'm not sure what the word is, but apparently there's an old cavalry post and stuff out there, so there's quite a bit of stuff, so we've already started dealing with the corporate agencies.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that.
So if you need, I mean, I'm on board for most of you coming forward on this, if that's what you were asking.
Okay, thank you.
We have consensus on that, so.
Thank you.
Supervisor Morris?
Yeah, no auto county, but we did have a TMC meeting, and you guys, most of you probably read the paper, and so it was a drought, extra dry year, so that is the minimum flows, which they are taking place right now. So even though it is minimum flows, I mean, people need be aware when they're on the river, which they're not supposed to be, so. And the other thing I participated was the fishing game season calls, which was quite interesting in itself. Fishing game was requested by, the Fishing Game Commission had a request from Mono, Inyo, and Sierra, and I'm missing one, to postpone the fishing opening season for the eastern trout, because they get quite an influx of thousands. They were indicating maybe 10,000 people coming to that area to go fishing on the day. And Mono County and the town of Mammoth are, were already hit by COVID, and they're extremely nervous, so they requested this. So what was proposed to the Fishing Game Commission is that they give Secretary, not Secretary, Director Bonham, head of the Fishing Game, the authority to close certain areas off, and that caused a pretty big storm. So the first phone-in meeting, they didn't have any filters on their phones, and we got to hear people read from the Bible and cuss and swear, and so that meeting got canceled.
Hopefully not the same people.
It was, there was over 500 on the phone, the directors couldn't get in because the phone was too full. There was the Constitution being read. It was, it was quite, quite the show. Then they held about a week later, which would have been last Wednesday, I'm guessing that they had a meeting where they could control who spoke and not, and so I had given written comments and that I had run past our Fishing Game Commission, and I also spoke at the meeting, and it was very well ran. And what, what we requested was that, that the counties be worked with before any closure would happen in that county, so the Board of Supervisors and the Health Department would be more than advised. And in the ordinance, it said that they would take advice from these Humboldts, Delmore, and Trinity requested that more, that it's more collaboration and work together. They did not change the ordinance, but Secretary Bonham put his reputation on the line to the three counties, saying that he would take no actions in this county without finding some sort of agreement with the county officials. So at this point, there's no closures in any of the North State, and I believe he did pass the, for the counties, the closures for Saturdays open. So, and again, there was a lot of controversy, a lot of very upset people about the right to fish and that sort of thing. So that's my report.
Supervisor Chadwell, could you hold for just about 30 seconds?
Words are a word.
See, see, we counted the donuts, there's one missing to prove.
So for those on the phone that didn't hear that, we're on a break.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, now we can go, so Supervisor Morris is going to report out on, we're reporting out.
Uh, no, auto county travel, I as well tried to jump on that phone call the first time and was denied access, it was too booked. And it really was, the agenda item was about giving some more authority to Director Bonham for the, at the request of these counties who were very concerned. I had to handle a few phone calls on this fishing game issue that Supervisor Groves mentioned. There was this sense that fishing was going to be denied across the state, wasn't the case. It was really these small rural counties who were very impacted by COVID. In fact, two of those counties, well, at least one that I know of, Mono, had at the time 20 cases and about the same population, and as Supervisor Groves pointed out, they were very concerned about this season drawing this influx of people that they weren't quite ready to handle, so I'm glad it got straightened out, and it was never really a blanket, no fishing allowed. As I had pointed out to some of our constituents, you can fish if you're local here, nothing is stopping that, it's your backyard, go fish. And other than that, handling some calls and directing some information to some area of businesses on funding opportunities that I have come across, many that Suzie listed as well. That's it.
Lot going on, even though we're not all going out. Lot going on, even though we're not going out. So I had a conference call with the COC, part of the funding that Susie Cuffins referred to. And other than that, I've had the privilege of homeschooling my nine-year-old granddaughter, so zooming in to class. So that's it, and I think we're going to go on to the ad hoc committees, federal lands legislation.
Keith and I discussed our position on the bill, and essentially what we felt was that at the last time the board took a vote, it was on a neutral stance, and that was with the purpose of acquiring more information and also with the desire of having Huffman come to the board of the county and directly answer some questions from the board and the public. That was done at the end of July. Further, as an ad hoc, we had asked that the Trinity Collaborative take it upon themselves to review the bill, review the bill, and provide advice as to the county's stance as far as the potential benefits or cons. Unfortunately, the group was unable to reach consensus on the desire to take a vote on the bill, and so we were unable to get that guidance from the collaborative. And because we feel that the collaborative is the ideal confluence of the county's special interest groups and primary stakeholders, the inability for conclusion on it from the collaborative essentially shows that the bill still remains highly controversial for the citizens of Trinity County. So as the ad hoc, we are asking if the board has the desire to bring the item forward at the next board meeting for a final vote, or let the last neutral vote stand as our final decision. So that is our request. If anyone has any questions for Keith or I?
Sounds good.
Which one?
I thought you only have one option.
If you want us to bring it forward at the next board meeting for a conclusion.
Let it lay as it is, neutral.
Right.
That's the only option I heard. Sorry.
Or, or to bring it back.
Right.
For a final vote. So those are the two options that we just closed.
What's your recommendation as the committee?
As the committee, we're asking you. We're probably, we're probably split. I, I would like to see it come back for a final vote because the reasoning from several of the board members last time was there wasn't enough information.
Okay.
So the information, the congressman came here, sat down, questions were answered. I do want to note, there was one minor change that he made in the bill after that meeting, and that was to allow grazing. But then the bill has passed the House and on up. So the question is, do the rest of you want to make a final statement on this, up or down or neutral, or do you just want to walk away with it, with our last vote being neutral?
I thought we got our information last time.
But Keith is correct. This is where we're, this is what was asked.
It was 4-1 when we voted before I went back to Washington and Jeremy volunteered to come. And at that time, that was before the congressman came out here. He came out here and answered the questions. We have not voted or taken a final stand. There was two or three people that wanted more information before they made a final vote. And so there's as much information out there as today as that we can possibly find or have had answered. So.
I mean, it is in limbo at the moment, in my understanding.
It's in the Senate, House. It's.
Won't go anywhere.
Well, you don't know that.
Okay, the question is actually, have you received more information and hasn't changed your opinion from the last time?
Yeah.
Should it be brought back to?
My case is last time.
Right.
Judy and Bobby both, I can't remember what your stand was. Both said there wasn't enough information before.
I don't remember saying that.
Well, you can watch the tape.
No, after he was here, I think my answer, my questions were.
We haven't, yes, but we haven't voted since then.
Oh.
My point is, the last time we voted was, and the reason, it was 4-1, the stated reason was because we didn't have enough information. Keith go to Washington, Jeremy tag along, and keep Keith out of trouble, which he did wonderfully. And.
Except for the Mount King.
And then, and then we requested for Huffman to come, and he came within two months and sat here in his room, but we have never voted since then.
I'm satisfied with the information I got once he arrived here, so.
That's not the question.
Well, I'm getting there. So my question is, I'm happy, we're, I'm fine with it being neutral.
And now that I hear that there's a discrepancy between the committee, it would probably.
Well, let me, let Jeremy speak for himself.
There's no discrepancy. We're okay with feeling different about it.
That's terrific, but since you don't agree, it would probably be better to let us look at it again.
Is that a?
And I'm, I'm fine either way, to be honest with you. But since I, we don't have, we have no consensus except, no consensus from our committee, there's no direct, there's no direct.
What I, what I want to do is kind of put this to bed for this, this bill, in that we make a final statement, one way or the other, for neutral or against, and then we're done. And then not until a new bill comes out, then we, but with this, with the COVID thing, God knows what's going to pass, and that's going to pass. I mean, that could have been put onto the COVID, and that was it. I mean, people got hundreds of millions of dollars for art centers and things, so. And so the question is, do we want to make a final stand now, or just, we just forget about it and let it go?
Okay, I'll move along with Judy. If we were neutral before, wait until the bill gets out again.
Right. And then, because I think it's at the moment in limbo.
That was a, that was a better explanation for it.
And that was my understanding, that that was our vote, and now if there was some really burning issue that just didn't get resolved, I'd say that'd be a different story, but I felt that my questions were answered when he came here as well. So I'm, I'm good until the next go-around.
With your answer.
Yeah, I personally, as a supervisor, I'm fine maintaining the neutral stance. It's pretty clear, the potential pros and cons. There are plenty of things we could ask for. The reality of whether or not we get any more asks is unclear, and the damage in making those requests and trying to turn them into, not demands, but to make them very contingent on the support of the bill, even if the bill passes and we drag our heels throughout the process, we might lose out on the ability to be awarded a lot of the promises that are, not promises, sorry, the mays, the things that may happen.
But stick with promises.
Yeah.
They're easier to break.
Yeah. So that's kind of the fine dance that I saw is how much can we resist before we really wreck our partnership? And the proposals that are of benefit to Trinity County are good. It's just a matter of if they pan out and follow through with what, what the attempts are. The, you know, the timber industry was against the bill, and they are one of our biggest industries, the top one or two industries in the county. But they also have their own lobbyists and their own ability to communicate with the congressman, and, and they had that time. And if, you know, they weren't able to acquire the results they wanted through their avenues, I'm not sure how effective it would be for us to just take their stance. But as Keith said, you know, the grazing was one of the additional changes that came about, in addition to some of the initial changes that were, that were made on behalf of Trinity County. So as I said, whatever I rambled on, I am fine maintaining a neutral stance, because I think it is such a contentious issue. I don't see it necessarily being able to have the 100% support of.
So this is Margaret. I'm going to jump in because we are on announcements and reports, and I want to make sure we don't get too far off. I heard that there was a request for direction to bring this back as an agenda item. Is that board direction, and if not, we need to keep moving?
So, yes, Margaret, you are correct, and I, I was trying to see the consensus, and people were weighing in, and so that was.
I appreciate that, and I understand that. I just wanted.
So I'm gonna, I'm going to request that we do bring this back. I'd like to have it brought back at the end of June or July as, as chairperson, because I feel like we need to be on the record as supervisors and not, I don't know, I don't think anything's going to happen, but I know that I have an obligation to the people that I serve. And I have, I have friends on both sides, so either, no matter what I do, I'm going to lose on this one. But I feel like Supervisor Groves has taken the lead on this. He's borne the most weight, and it's his request, and I want to honor that. So I'm going to request that bring it back. Dr. Coons, put it on the agenda, please, for later in the year, so the public, if possible, can be here.
Thank you, Sharon. So with that, the ad hoc will not do any other further work until.
So do you want to suspend it for this time?
Yeah, it's up to you. I don't know if there's such thing as suspension, or if we just go away with it, and then if at a later date we need to reappoint it. Is that, is that correct, Margaret?
Yeah, that's correct. You can, you can disband it now, and if it's needed later, just reform.
Okay, that's what I would request also, unless you have a, is that not?
That's fine.
So, so, yeah, I, that's great. I don't think you need my approval. I think they just did it themselves, so.
Who's going to keep Keith out of trouble?
You want to draw draws?
He locks the door from the outside. Been banging on it for a week, and nobody's running around.
Okay, so no more conversation on that county matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order, seeing only one. We will just move forward to human resources, item 4.1, increase the allocation of the Sheriff's Office jail division from 19, 19 to 23, 23 correctional deputy sheriff slash dispatcher, one, two, three, effective April 21, 2020, approximate cost and salary and benefits per month at a step for a correctional deputy, one is $5,459, a correctional deputy two is $5,844, and a correctional deputy three is $6,687. And do we have any? Yes. Public, what was that?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Shelley Nelson.
I was just going to see if there's anybody on the line that wanted to speak to this. I'm sorry, Shelley. Hearing none. Shelley.
Thank you. Good morning. This is Shelley Nelson, HR Director. So just at the last board meeting, the April 7th board meeting, the board approved the annual allocation of positions listing for all departments, which we use for budgeting for the upcoming fiscal year, which would be the 2021 fiscal year. There was a request that was submitted by the Sheriff's Office, which was inadvertently omitted from that document, and the request is to increase the allocation for the correctional deputy dispatcher series from 19 to 23. This is due to the need of increasing staffing and the anticipation of the new jail during the new fiscal year. So we're requesting that you would approve the modification.
Any questions from the board?
Is.
Go ahead, Keith.
Is that already in the budget?
Well, the budget hasn't been developed yet. This is, yeah, in anticipation of it.
I'm sorry, I got lost on the time we hear the budget goes.
Okay, I have no more comments.
Motion made to approve as presented. Second?
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwell? Aye. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate all your hard work, and we know it's unusual circumstances, and you just do an absolutely wonderful job. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So we are going to go into closed session, and I'll read these, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break, if that's what they look for. Closed session 5.1, Government Code, Section 54954 dot five, parentheses C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, number of cases, one. Item 5.2, continued from April 7, 2020, governmental code, Section 54954 dot five, parentheses E, public employment appointment, Richard Coons, parentheses county administrative officer. So with that, we thank all of you that have participated, either online or on conference call, and it is, oh, public comment. I am sorry. Thank you. Public comment? Thank you, Tina. Hearing none, we're coming back, and it's close enough to 11:30. We will rejoin at 11:40. Thank you.